Eva?
Here.
Michael? All right, any agenda adjustments?
Yes, just one. I will be asking you to vote approval for Matthew Murray, and that is under C, extracurricular positions, because this is a new position.
Okay, I make a motion to approve that agenda adjustment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 12th as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yep.
I noticed that Mr. McLaughlin abstained, and there was no explanation for the abstaining on that vote on the refrigerator.
Okay. Did you want to just add?
Yeah, I'm happy to give an explanation.
Yeah, sure.
Personally know the folks who placed the bid.
Sure.
One of the folks who placed one of the bids.
Sure. Jody, if we can just make that adjustment. Do I have a motion to, or I make a motion to approve the agenda adjustments as presented? Is there a second?
Minutes adjustment, not agenda second.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So I retract the first one, and you wanted to make an adjustment?
Yes.
Yep.
To amend it, to have conflict of interest.
And I support that. Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Next up, I want to address the public comments from the last meeting. I want to thank Ed for bringing up the fact of the retirement party, and I just would ask the Finance Committee to be able to look into that a little bit further, to see are there line items where we have that budgeted, and just making sure on a go-forward, we know what we have allotted there. And I want to thank Greg Newell for providing us with the white pages. That's been very helpful. So, thank you so much for that. Next, it's other committee acknowledgements. I just want to remind everybody acknowledgements for wonderful things that the students have done, or faculty. And so, I know that at UTC, the skills happened, and I heard from a student that was so proud to say that they were going on to the next step. So that's what it's really all about, and it's just very exciting to hear how excited our students are about it. Chris?
I'm all set.
Jesse?
I'm all set, thanks.
Haley?
I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things. There wasn't any information related to go over from the principals, so we didn't have a lot of feedback on what's been going on. I thought the school board should consider in the future...
Did you have acknowledgements for the faculty and students? Like, an opportunity to talk about what they have done?
You have to let me finish my sentence.
Well, it started out with school committee, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so, I would like the school committee to consider doing a survey that we send out to the staff and students, so that we can get feedback, making sure that we're hearing from them about what things they need support on. That's part of our job, and so I think that's something that we should look at going forward. And I'm getting a lot of feedback.
These items can be brought up in the potential agenda items. Did you have acknowledgements for the faculty and the students for things that they've done well?
Other than awesome communication and navigating all of the challenges with Power School, my heart goes out to all the teachers having to navigate that, and messing with all the grades and all of that. So, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Ryan?
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay. Eva?
So, I'll give a report on what happened before our February break. We had winter carnival. It was very, very successful this year. There was about 90% participation every single day. And we had our assembly, which the students loved. The seniors took the win home as usual. And after the restful break we had, we also have had the middle school visit. So, the other day, students from Herman High School went to Caravelle and Herman Middle School to talk about the great opportunities here at the high school. Additionally, the Unified Team has been doing very well. It's a very fun team to be on. They have playoffs this Saturday, and the senior night is tomorrow. And this week, there's 8th grade Step Up Day and the Club Fair. So, that's an opportunity for the current students to show what clubs and how they're involved in Herman High School, and for the 8th graders to see what they can get involved in once they become freshmen here at Herman. And then additionally, I started a new club at Herman, and it's called Best Buddies. It's an organization that works with students that have disabilities and students that don't, and works on forming friendships between them. So, it's a really great way to connect our student body, and I'm excited to have that here at Herman.
Awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the impact you make. Next up, we're going to move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee, or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints or promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function, and we'd like to welcome Greg Newell. Somebody keeping time, please.
Chair, Committee Members, Superintendent Greg Newell, Herman. The last meeting was stated by the Chair that no one that is on the committee is allowed to contact or reach out to vendor, any vendors. I'm not sure who you think you are, what organization you're in, but you do not have the right or power to control me, my speech, or what I do in my free time. You have no policy or subcommittee policy dictating my right to call or any asking basic questions to any vendors I want, and if you did, it wouldn't be legal. Are you aware this is a public building owned by the citizens of this town? This place doesn't belong to the Superintendent or this committee. The Superintendent is to run the school department per the direction of the local elected committee members. This committee is supposed to make sure their employee is following all the laws and policy. This committee fails to do that. I also do not appreciate during my public comment, the Superintendent will lean over to the Chair and rudely state that I'm lying. Well, if you ever read what I provide to you, it would show that I'm telling the truth. I foiled the DNS bills. I read them. Most likely, you did not. On the document dated November 17th, 2023, the one I handed to this committee, it states the following: "reviewed four files flagged by ESAT as having Trojans, and found one that was created on October 2nd." This is October 2nd, 2023, a month before the school district found the ransomware. And there were four Trojans. It goes on to state, "event logs were wiped on the server, so we were only able to see the logs after the attacker wiped out the logs. Confirmed malware did, in fact, encrypt data files." So if you had actually hired a vendor that knew what they were doing, we could have found out what the attacker took and then hid from us. The logs were wiped, but there are methods to retrieve those logs. I called DNS as a private citizen and was going to ask them two questions. First question, what standard do they use for the assessment for the school infrastructure? They got very upset with this question, which is a first, as I've contacted more than 50 vendors over the years that I've been in IT. Second question I was trying to ask was what certificates they had that qualified them to do the assessment and forensic audit. If they were doing the right thing and had the right certificates, they'd be more than willing to tell me. They wouldn't provide any clarification threatening me for asking a simple question, which I've asked for vendors for years. Why won't this committee be honest with the citizens and parents, and tell us what is really going on, and if you made mistakes, own them. Stop hiding the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ed Ford?
Good evening. I'm Ed Ford, Herman, 2636 Union. And it's a little odd coming up here right now, prior to the budget discussion, but I just wanted to put it out there that citizens are still very concerned with the undesignated fund portion of the budget. So I'm hoping that the board will continue their work right now as they try to work through that and continue to follow state law. The state law is pretty, pretty basic as far as what you're allowed and not allowed to do with that document, with that money, so hopefully they'll continue to follow that. The last city council, town council meeting, somebody had mentioned that possibly the board was considering moving some of that undesignated fund into a reserve account. And that's great if that's legal, and if there's possibility to get a legal opinion that you're allowed to do that, I say let it rip. But I, I mean, in looking at the law now, I don't see how that's possible. And I will ask too, the board, if it's possible to have an accurate number by the time we hit, you know, by the time we're presenting this to the town council on what that number is, what that actual number is. Currently, right now, we're dealing with June 2023. So, by the time we hit June coming up, that number will be a year old. And so I'm trying to figure out how people are making decisions on moving that around. Number two, there will be people that are assigning what percentage of the budget that is, and I'm not sure how you're going to do that with, you know, if we don't know, if we don't have an actual number of what that is. And number three, just as you go through the Transportation Cost Center, I would encourage you to think out ahead 25, for the next budget, possibly to do a cost analysis on the transportation budget. I don't know if maybe that's been done the last year or so, but I would just recommend that you take a look at that going forward next year. Not this budget cycle, but next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, personnel.
You have in front of you two resignations. One is from Tiffany Gilly. She has been the high school health teacher here at Herman High School for the last two years, and she's relocating to Southern Maine with her family. And the second is Tim Thornton, or Hallie Tim Thornton. He was the varsity girls' basketball coach this year, and has decided to step away at the end of the season. Under employment, you have, I've hired Valerie Stellene for food service assistant. She started this month, and under, with the Herman Middle School Self-Contain program, hired Julie Austin as a self-contained educational technician. And as previously mentioned, you have in your collective bargaining agreement with the teachers, you have stipended positions. Several years ago, you approved a, in a memorandum of understanding, you approved an assistant tennis coach. Due to the size of that program, we believe that we need to have two varsity coaches, one for our boys' program and one for our girls' program. And so, that is why I'd ask you to approve Matt Murray for the boys' varsity coach. He is going to be taking on that program, and that right now, in approving that, that represents, currently, you would pay him a 4.5% stipend as the JV coach, which would be $1,620, and a varsity coach for that program would receive $3,420. So that's an $1,800 difference. So, you already have the memorandum for an assistant, but we, again, due to the size of the program, believe we need to have two varsity programs, so it would be a difference of $1,800.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Valerie Stellene as the food services assistant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve Julie Austin as the Herman Middle School Self-Contain Ed Tech. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I make a motion to approve Matthew Murray as a varsity tennis coach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Just trying to gather more of the information. So, this is a new position that we're funding. Can you say that part again?
Because of the number of students.
We didn't have this information in advance, so I'm just trying to make sure, as I was writing to.
Yes, you have in your contract with the teachers, a stipend list, right? There is a, you wouldn't even see this, because it's a memorandum of understanding. So when a stipends get approved, you do that on an annual basis. It's usually in April or May, I bring stipends to you that aren't in the contract. We add them in, so teachers can make proposals, athletic teams, et cetera. A couple of years ago, the school committee approved a JV coach due to the numbers of the program. Now, we're seeing even greater numbers, and believe we need to have a sole varsity coach for girls, and a sole varsity coach for boys. So, in doing that, we would have to increase the percentage that we would be paying to line up with the other varsity coach. So, it's an $1,800 difference to have Mr. Murray as your varsity coach instead of a JV coach.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, old business. I make a motion to excuse Deb Koalas from last time, because they were in the middle of their teacher negotiations. She's got the same thing tonight. Do I have a second for last time?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the first reading to adopt policy DFF, Student Activities Funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the first reading of policy GBEBA, Dress and Grooming, as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? I make a motion to approve the first reading to rescind policy IGDG, Combined Funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the first reading of policy JED, Attendance as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I add something?
Yes, please.
I need to add something to this policy.
Yep.
So, we, thankfully, somebody proofread this policy for their building, i.e. Melissa Davis, and she informed me that in addition to the language that we were going to ask you to vote on, which is in red, the law states that the policy under Page 2, Letter B, it says, is at least seven. The law is six. That obviously should reflect what the law says. So, that should say six years of age, and not seven. So, I would also request that that be amended and put into the, into the first reading.
Okay, I retract my motion, and Chris, you retract your second. I make a motion to approve, under Page 2B, for it to say six instead of seven. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I'd like to open it up for public comment again. Under new business, we're going to take all new business together. So, A, B, and C. I'll close public comment at this time. Micah? Teachers?
Yes. Yes, you have in your packet, you have a list of teachers that are moving from their probationary year one to year two, and their year two into continuing contract year three.
I make a motion to approve the list of teachers as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Have they all been recommended by the principal? I mean, they all have good evaluations, and there's no issues?
Yes, all new teachers in the probationary years are evaluated annually by their principals, and if we had concerns, they would either have been addressed, or they wouldn't be presented.
So, they're recommended basically by their principal?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
What does that probationary period mean?
Under Maine law, probationary period is two years. So, when you are teaching, and you go to either a new district, or you are hired right out of college, you have a two-year probationary period, which means you're evaluated annually. Every school district has different evaluation process. Ours is, I believe it's four. We do four, a couple of drop-ins, and then one formal evaluation. You have the opportunity to meet with the building principal, or the assistant principal, whoever has the legal authority to conduct the observation, and then you're recommended on to either year two, which you then go through the process. Again, you've probably noticed Mr. Walsh in some of your classes at various points, or Mrs. Buberstein, and then you're recommended from year two into year three, which is your professional certificate, and that means, that's essentially like a tenure, if you want to look at it that way. So, then you go into a, like a semi-annual or tri-annual evaluation cycle of either every second year or every third year.
It basically means you can be terminated without cause in...
Yes, as a probationary teacher, you can be non-renewed without cause. That's correct. Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, we'll move to the presentation of the budget.
Okay, I would ask that the school committee come down to either one of the, well, ideally this front row down here, and we will be projecting the budget presentation on the screen. I'll probably have to move some of these tables back just a little bit. So, we're going to do a little old-school presentation. I don't have the ability to hook in directly up here anymore, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Bean to tab over for me when appropriate. I'm obviously following it on my computer as well. So, this is the proposed FY '25 budget. Please bear in mind that we are four to five weeks ahead of schedule from where we were last year. We are still very much in the preliminary phase of this budget. We anticipate significant changes to our Cost Center expenditure budget over the next two weeks. The goal would be to bring you a final, very accurate, concrete number on March, well, hopefully, March 27th, and then go to Town Council on March 28th. So, Melissa, if you'd go to the next slide. The budget for this particular school year has several notable additions to it. The budget right now includes the addition of a middle school teacher. That teacher is there presently, however, it is funded through federal dollars, and this budget moves that position over to local funding. The middle school also would be the beneficiary of the nurse. As you know, from, I think, my first year here, you approved a nurse at the middle school, and we have seen those health needs increase dramatically in the last two years. So, this budget also accommodates for moving a middle school nurse full-time from federal over to local. We have to do that, because those federal funds will no longer be available for us, starting in September. It does accommodate, you'll see this in the presentation, it accommodates for pretty significant wage increases and benefit increases. I would highlight, though, that those are only, again, a projection. We are currently in negotiations with the largest collective bargaining unit. Those are the teachers. There's 105 or 6 people represented by that contract, so we had to put a placeholder in, both for health insurance and, obviously, for salary. We also had to put a placeholder in for all health insurances right now. So, this budget does reflect a projection for your largest CBA, as well as all your health insurance across the district. It does capture all the needed supplies, and I would also note that it captures supplying all students K8 with supplies. all students K8 with supplies. That's K8. We have had some conversations about 912, but at this time, it is a K8 supply budget here that's represented. And it continues to reduce the undesignated fund. That's, obviously, one of the things that we're actually focusing very hard on with this budget, is to reduce the undesignated fund, and to come in as a little increase, obviously, to the town as possible, or to, you know, to the Herman taxpayer. Melissa, next slide, please. So, and I apologize for the bulb here. The process is highlighted here. You can see that we have gone through a number of meetings. Some of them are either, we started with Facilities Committee. We really felt like Facilities was important, because one of the goals in this year's budget was to identify one-time costs. So, what are we spending our money on one time that is an improvement, not only in our facilities, but also in, perhaps it's in IT, perhaps it's in athletics, whatever that might be. So, we started with the Facilities Committee in December. Also, in December, at Christmas time, and right when we get back from vacation, I have my principal and director meetings, and when I say "I," I also usually include Jamie in that, because Jamie is instrumental in this budget process. You know, she's very critical in this process, and so oftentimes, it is she and I, and I do not mean to steal any credit. If it's bad, you can have it, but if it's credit, we should share it, right? So, Jamie is instrumental in that, and her work, as you know, from tuition rate to, you know, just the work that she does, is, I appreciate it very much. She's the person I see every single day when I'm at work. So, we meet with the principals, and we talk about staffing requests. We talk about ratios. We talk about, maybe there's significant instructional increases, technology increases, you know, do they want, you know, a certain type of laptop? Do they want X amount of smart boards, or whatever it might be? And we ask for justification and rationalization. We then had our first finance committee, where we started to draw in, we've been meeting as a finance committee all spring, excuse me, all fall, but we had our first finance committee meeting, where we start to bring in some of those outside members, in particular, members of the town council, and I appreciate all the effort that, you know, goes into that, and them meeting with us. We had an overview on January 30th, as a finance committee, of the draft budgeted revenues. Remember, your budget is built on expenditures and revenues, and so the goal is to, obviously, those have to balance. And so, we reviewed our projected revenues on January 30th, and then we began to really discuss, you know, based on those revenues, you have an idea of where, you know, your expenditures can land. We then had another finance committee meeting on February 12th, where we reviewed the revenues, and we began to discuss the projected fund balance for what we would have to use to balance this year's budget, and also continue to review those capital improvements. And then, on February 29th, this last Thursday, we reviewed this presentation, and we went through, looking for accuracy, and really coming up with a plan to present to the school committee tonight on March 4th, for first reading and a tentative, okay, is this the direction that we want to move within this budget? That date will have to change, March 18th, because now it's looking like it's going to be a little bit later than that, and then, obviously, town council. Melissa, next slide, please. This is your population over the last, one, two, three, four, five, six years. Obviously, for '24, '25, we are dealing with projections again. We do anticipate a slight increase at the high school from this year. Obviously, most of that is attributed to outgoing seniors and incoming freshmen, and then we will get a better idea. We have those eighth-grade visits, going to different schools, and we'll get a better idea for students that will be committing to Herman High School as the spring progresses. But you can see, we took a little bit of a dip this year. From last year, we projected, we were projecting more in the 1,400 range, and we fell to 1,353 for your October 1 count. And your enrollment is based on a two-year rolling average, so your enrollment that the state subsidizes at is based upon your previous two October 1 counts. So, we are anticipating a slight bump up next year, and that, obviously, is good for your state subsidy. Yes, Jesse? Yes. Put that right now. You can't see this on your side, because, remember, we're not connected. Thank you, Jesse. Okay. Melissa, next slide, please. I was told to not spend a lot of time here on the ED 279. For those of us in education, this is something that we're very passionate about. However, I understand that as we move away from education, and this is, you know, okay, this is how the state funds you, great, moving on. So, what I like to highlight here is the, you can see the two-year rolling average, so that gives you an idea of where our numbers fell, like where those numbers actually get pulled from. This is all public information. You can go to the State and Maine website, the DOE website, and pull this, this tab, just select the right year and the school district of Herman. You can also see that what the state does is, they give you what's called, like, a ratio of, this is how many teachers you should have, and if you have more than that, you don't get funded at the ratio of one, right? You want to be funded at the ratio of one. So, you can see, for example, that, now, and remember, they also say that this is what you should be able to offer, you know, essential programs and services. And at Herman, obviously, we don't believe that those ratios that the state proposes for many of the positions, teachers, guidance, librarian, health, educational, technicians, library techs, et cetera, we don't necessarily believe that that's what's in the best educational interest for our students. So, we like to show, and you can see where some of our priorities lie. We certainly, we like to have strong ratios of teachers to students. We have a little bit more than what the state recommends. We have 88. The state recommends 84. We have six individuals in our guidance department. The state, based on our enrollment, says we should have 4.58. They recommend we should have 1.72 librarians, and that's, obviously, a challenge, because it is impossible to have 1.7 of something, especially when it's a person. We also, you can see, based on the budget that we are proposing from the first slide, we are going to be increasing in the health category in line four. The state says that we should have 1.72 people, and that's, that's, obviously, that's not the case. You're going to have, if you approve this budget, three. So, that will be an area where we are, we are hit. So, but ultimately, what this information leads to, Melissa, next slide, please, is how the state will provide its subsidy to you, and at what number. And so, you have a pre-K8 subsidy. Last year, that subsidy was $7,790 per student. This year, it is $8,024, which is an increase of $234. So, that is, obviously, a positive thing, and you increased by about two total students, because, remember, it's an average. At the 912 level, the subsidy was, last year, 8,267, and the subsidy for this year is 8,510, which, obviously, is an increase. And then, you have, ultimately, again, where these all kind of land, is the contribution expected of the town and the contribution by the state. And you can see that the town's contribution is $4,301,000, which is up $143,000 from last year, and the state contribution is up from 8.6 million to 8.9 million, which yields a $327,000 increase. So, overall, your subsidy this year is up $470,000, which is, that's a very good thing, because your costs are also increasing. Next slide, please, Melissa. Thank you. So, I always end with the total, but I'm going to start with the total. So, this year, right now, we have a cost center expenditure budget of $20,078,578. So, if you take all 10 cost centers, you add them up, we, right now, are at $20,078,578. However, in many of our finance committee meetings, we have been talking about reducing that number, and right now, our targeted amount, I would, I would even say it's less than this, but we are trying to bring this number down into the $19,861,198 range. And we're doing that through a couple of different ways. We are targeting areas that we have not fully expended in years past. So, Jamie and I, over the last 48 hours, have been talking about where are we spending, or where we say we're going to spend money, and then we never fully expend, so we end the, we end a particular cost center at 94% expended, 93% expended, and why, what is driving that non-expenditure? And also, trying to factor in some type of, Jesse, what was the term you used again? Just attrition, using an attrition rate. Projecting teachers in and out, and the difference in their salaries and benefits is very challenging. You have two people retiring this year. You have people who leave in the middle of the year. You have positions that go unfilled for a certain period of time. And so, trying to figure out, on a payroll side, what can you knock off, if you will, so that you don't over-expend and over-benefit on your wages and benefits? Because we always have staff attrition. That's, it's very common. And so, what we are targeting, and Jamie and I had a conversation just a couple hours before this meeting, we really believe that in the next two weeks, we are going to bring the expenditure budget in somewhere around $19,780-something thousand. So, I, we believe we can get that even $100,000 lower. Our goal is to come in at 3% to 3.5% increase. That's, that is our goal. Our targeted amount, obviously, is 4%, but we do believe, after starting to review those cost centers, reviewing the areas that don't seem to get expended to their full amount, we are hopeful that this will be in the 19.7 range, when it is all said and done, and I bring this back to you for a final reading later on this month. So, that is our hope. That is our target. I think it's accomplishable, and if we do, this is how we project the rest of the budget to line up. So, this year, wow, that is dark. I don't have a laser pointer, so I'll, I'm just going to walk up here. What we did was, we showed the major expenditure improvements. So, these are where we are spending a significant amount of money on what we consider to be one-time facilities improvement costs. They range from a new cafeteria floor, putting down ceramic tile at our elementary school. We have to abate the old tile due to asbestos concerns. There's a significant door project at the middle school, those big, heavy doors, both on, on several exteriors, as well as several interiors where our boiler room is. It represents a $68,000 budgeted engineering design for a significant high school renovation for the science labs. We have two science labs in the building that we would like to renovate next year, but we need an engineering design first, before we can do that. So, it represents an engineering design, and it also represents a new storage water tank at the elementary school. So, we have $208,000 budgeted in one-time expenditures. That would be significant capital improvements here at the, at all three campuses. We also have a new bus purchase, so buses are more than that, but that's what we're not going to be reimbursed for. Did I say that right? $80,000, because we're going to a buy-a-bus-a-year model, not leasing one? Sort of correct. Call Jamie tomorrow, if you want to know more about buses. We also have cabling projects, some antivirus software that we are looking to install, to make sure that all of our students' laptops have antivirus software. We're working on improving our camera system and our paging system at both the middle school and the elementary school, creating some battery backups for our servers, and doing a security audit in the fall, so that we can compare that to our DNS audit, to see where we land in making many of the improvements that they recommended. That little sliver of $30,000 that you probably, you can read it on the bottom, athletics, there's a couple of additional athletics supplies that we are looking to buy this year. So, again, we anticipate those to be one-time costs. So, that total is $406,000. So, one-time expenditures, $406,000, and you can see where they largely lie from a cost center standpoint. Facilities, transportation, other instruction, and athletics. Melissa, next slide, please. So, we also are, we are aware, and we are trying to really recalibrate how we do things. We understand that in the last several years, whether it's been due to increased unanticipated revenue, or, I think, I think we have good systems in place where we don't spend everything that we think we are going to spend. We're not overspenders, that's for sure. We do believe that we will have some money left over at the end of this budget year. We are still working on trying to get an accurate projection of what that number is going to be. These are our reserve accounts. The town holds these reserve accounts, and what I would like to do is, I would like to take whatever we have left over, I'm using a placeholder number for right now, I'm using it, it's in red, I'm using $250,000. I would like to use a, I would like to create, excuse me, through this process, a reserve account to fund those renovation costs for that science lab, which we would like to do next summer, going into the FY '26 budget year. Right now, I am anticipating $250,000 to be unexpended at the end of the year, and rather than put that back in, or not draw it off of the undesignated fund balance, we would like to put it into a reserve account, so when we get sticker-shocked about what the renovation costs are going to be, we have a pool of money already designated for that project, and that way, again, we are not coming back in next year's budget cycle, saying, we really want to do these labs, it's a half a million dollars, and we need a half a million dollars. We have some money set aside. So, I'm hopeful that, again, at the end of March, we have a much firmer number for you, or at least a ceiling number, like, we want to fund this at $500,000, and we think that's what we'll have left over. So, I just wanted to show you where that line was, and where I believe we should put whatever we have left over at the end of this year, unexpended, we should put it into a science lab renovation project here at Herman High School. Melissa, next slide, please. So, what this budget assumes, when you look at our revenues, this budget assumes that if you go to our June 30th, undesignated fund balance of $3170,000, we are assuming that the million dollars we planned on spending is expended at the end of the year. If it is not, it will be, whatever's left of that, will be moved into that reserve account. So, we are assuming those two things, right? We're assuming that we spend that million dollars in some capacity, whether it's on the budget, or it's on the budget, and the rest gets moved into a designated reserve account. That would then leave us with $2170,788 in our unassigned fund balance at the start of next year. We then listed all the capital improvement projects that we have planned that are one-time costs, and we would like to use $406,000, so that 406.5, that was on the previous slide, we'd like to use $406,000 from our undesignated fund balance to fund those one-time capital improvement projects. And right now, that would leave a gap. With all our revenues and all our expenditures, that would leave a $973,000 gap, and we would propose pulling that money, or pulling that revenue, from this undesignated fund balance. So, right now, based upon that $19,861,000, I am looking to use 1.379,724 from our undesignated fund balance, and you can see where that would leave us, if all went according to plan. You can see where that would leave us to start the FY '26 year. So, it's So it's something that we have discussed at length at Finance Committee, that Jamie and I have talked about a lot. And like I said, this year, we're really trying to recalibrate on not over-budgeting and underspending to 4%, 5%, but getting that down into that 2%. We think that's a really important target goal, and we think it's very important for people who are concerned and want to see how the budget works, that they can see that we are attempting to reduce the undesigned fund, and you can see how much would be used on one-time projects, and you can see how much would be used for the operational budget. Melissa, next slide, please. Thank you. You can also see here, you have your history of local contribution. So I did show you the $4 million earlier. You also have some other numbers that the town has historically contributed. They contribute $571,000 to the debt service. That's the bond addition at the elementary school. They have historically contributed, in the last two years, one point... Sorry. So one of those numbers is not right. Jamie, which one of those... Do you know off the top of your head which number is not right?
I don't know.
So one of those is not right. I apologize. I'm not sure which one. They should be the same. We're asking for the same amount of money that they contributed last year. It's up on my folder. But you can see that we are requesting $83,000 in addition. And that is something that certainly the school committee could say, "No, we don't want to have any increase," and we could request, obviously, less from the additional local, $83,000 less. And we could, obviously, fund that from the undesigned fund. So I got to just figure out which number is right and make a note of that. Thank you, Melissa. These are your tentative increases to your collective bargaining units. I think it's important to see your payroll, because payroll is, obviously, in a district with teachers and educational technicians, and food service, and a bus fleet, and a mechanic, and directors, and principals. I mean, you have a lot of people that you employ. It would be probably your biggest employer in the town. I don't know that with 100% confidence, but I would guess it's very close. And you can see where we have the projection of increases of $400,000, more than $400,000 in one CBA, $166,000 in another collective bargaining, $61,000 in your third collective bargaining. You have three. All others, so anybody who doesn't fall within that, increases $180,000. And remember, that runs the gamut. That's people changing health insurances. That would be your tuition reimbursements, or projecting what people will take for classes. That's steps on a wage scale. That's 3% increases, or 2% increases, whatever that employment... Excuse me. Whatever that position is getting slated for. So we're projecting roughly $827,000 in wage and benefits increases at this time, and hopefully, we will get some health insurance numbers by the end of March, or at least by sometime in April, and be able to have a firmer number there. Melissa, next slide, please. So I'm going to move quicker through these next several slides, because they're the cost centers. And like I said, we anticipate many of these cost center expenditures to come down over the next two weeks, and we will be posting all the cost centers in their finality before the next school committee meeting. But what I'd like to show specifically with regular instruction, it is your biggest cost center. It is your wages and benefits for your teachers and your general educational technicians. So I put some of the increases in wages and benefits. And I also showed what is spent in wages and benefits, or what's projected to be spent. And you can see that, no surprise, wages and benefits makes up a very large part of that cost center, just again, because it's... Right people are expensive, and we want good teachers. So we want good educational technicians, and we want to offer them, obviously, competitive contracts. We value the teachers here at Herman. I know you do. It also... This is the cost center that captures all your instructional supplies, your furniture, books, subscriptions, dues and fees, et cetera. And I like to show how much is actually being spent. This is at all three buildings. This isn't just in one building. This is across all three. So just to put this in perspective, if you're spending, or you're approving $490,000 in supplies, you have over 1,300 students in the district. You're spending about $360 per student on supplies, and they get a laptop included in that. Now, that doesn't mean they get to take it home. There are some differences between, right, K-1, 2, 3, et cetera, and 5 through 12. But we are a one-to-one district. And so at $361 a student, I think you're doing a really good job, obviously. I don't know if parents could do that if they were just going to Walmart and buying supplies. I'm not 100% sure. Depend on the lists and what gets sent home. But you know, you're doing a really good job at providing supplies and technology for the students here at the Herman School Department. So Melissa, next slide, please. You then have your special education, and so you can see your wages and benefits increase. Remember, you would have all your special education teachers, you'd have all your educational technicians, you have your special ed director, your assistant director, and you have your added district placement. And so you can see that there's already been quite a bit of work on this budget, because the increase in projected wages is more than what the change is. So we've already been working on this cost center to make sure that, obviously, we want to be very tight in our percentage spent. Next cost center, please. Yes, other instruction. So this is mostly athletics. This lives here, but this is also where stipend positions live. And so just in stipend positions alone, we're anticipating close to a $60,000 increase, because stipend positions are a percentage of a base salary. If the base salary goes up X amount right through the negotiation process, then that percentage goes up... Sorry. The amount paid based on the percentage goes up. We also have... We're anticipating a pretty significant increase in purchase services, signer fees, referees. Those all cost money. Sports are expensive, but they're very valuable to our students, and there's a lot of great life lessons in sports. So we want, again, we want to make sure we're offering all those things to our students. So we are anticipating a significant increase in our purchased services for referees, signer fees, et cetera, across all sports. Melissa, next slide, please. Student-staff support. This is a very large cost center at almost projected $2 million. This is where you have your... All your nurses, but this is also where that additional nurse lies. This is where your curriculum coordinator is. You obviously increased, hired a full-time curriculum coordinator a few months back, which is very beneficial to a district of over 1,300 students. I appreciate it. But that does come, obviously, at an increase. And then you obviously have some of the technology. You know, this is where your tech director lives. This is where your data specialist lives, any of your other techs, and all the capital expenditures that were noted on the previous slide. Next slide, please, Melissa. Thank you. System administration. This is your... This is me. This is Jamie. This is the central office. Yep. Next slide, please. School administration. This is all your building principals, the assistant principals. Also would be their supply lines and things that they're budgeting for in their buildings. Next slide... Oh, thank you. Transportation. We have our own fleet, and we have several buses in that fleet. You also have a mechanic in your cost center here, because we do much of the work ourselves in-house. And as I mentioned earlier, a bus increase. You also have a transportation director, and so you can see the increase there for Facilities and maintenance is a significant category. That's why I think it was important to start the year with, or start the budget process with the facilities committee meeting. It's also why the school committee, why you approved to have another five-year facilities study done, because it will give you direction and insight into what projects need to be put forward. So I'm very excited to have that kicked off next, well, hopefully, this summer and then into the fall. You also have... This is... PFAS is a new area for us. We have the filters installed... Excuse me. We have the filtration system installed, but this is now going to come at increased costs, and we're not sure how often filters will have to be replaced. A single filter is $800. You have 12 canisters. So you're looking at $10,000 for filter changeout. Right now, we're being told it's annual. It really depends on how much water is run through the system. So we are anticipating this to be an annual cost, but again, this is a new cost to us. And so obviously, like, you know, it's a big cost. And it's been a huge inconvenience in regards to, obviously, purchasing bottled water and trying to provide drinking water for our students. The engineering project, I won't spend any more significant time on that, but the engineering project pads and the middle school projects. Next slide, please. Here's your debt. This is the bond payment to the elementary school. It goes down a little bit every year as the principal is paid down. So you have a change there. And then, next slide, please. And then, in years past, we've always... Historically, we've always asked for a significant amount of money to help keep the food program afloat here at the schools. You pay for... Or, excuse me, you have and have always... We've always asked for contribution for all the food service workers. There's a director for that program. There's several workers that provide lunch and breakfast. Since the state has gone to a reimbursable model, which we anticipate to happen again, that program is now funding itself, and so we will not be asking for any money for that program. We do believe it will stay in the black if the state keeps it in its current model. And then what we anticipate is, I always try to predict out... The good news is, you'll notice that there are no positions for future budgets, specifically next year. We are not anticipating adding any positions moving forward, at least for the next year, which is a great thing in regards to... I feel like our growth is stabilized. I feel like we have hit ratios that we believe are educationally beneficial to our students. However, as I mentioned earlier, looking at a significant renovation project here for two science lab classrooms, and looking at a pretty good size, we're anticipating about a $150,000 paving project. If you've ever driven the middle school parking lot, especially around the back where students get picked up, it is really bad. We think we can get one more year out of it, but that's going to be due very, very soon. So we feel like those two projects will be the major things that will need to be addressed in next year's budget. And that is the budget presentation. While we'll obviously take questions, I feel like it's best to go back up on stage so that you can have a mic.
Comment. Any other discussions?
Yes. So you just made a motion. Are you considering this a first reading?
Yep.
We haven't even had workshops.
Yep.
Did you have... What did you have for discussion items that you wanted to bring forward for them? I do... I'm trying to understand, because you just made a motion as a reading, as though this is the budget process. We haven't even had workshops, and you're going to consider this a vote?
For the first reading. And then the second reading is potentially on the next line item for the 27th.
But we haven't even met as a whole committee.
We just went over the timeline. What items did you want to bring forward that you have concerns about?
Well, I'm trying to clarify, because you guys are using words interchangeably, and I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear and my expectations that I understand, because the budget hasn't even been shared with the entire committee, just a budget presentation. We haven't had a chance to communicate at all, all as a committee, to even go over the budget whatsoever.
So what concerns and questions do you have that you want to be able to talk about?
Well, I have lots of questions.
Okay.
Which is what was meant for a workshop. So when I saw that the workshop was listed, and I've asked Mr. Venziano to help with that, and some of the town council, because that was my understanding, we were all going to do two workshops like you used to do.
What questions do you have about the budget? I want to hear them.
I'm unclear how you could even make a motion to have this be a first reading when you haven't gone through the process.
We just went through the process. That's the process that we do. It's presented to the committee. Now is our opportunity to ask questions. Any of us have the opportunity to attend the finance subcommittees if we wish. What questions do you have so that we can address them, please?
I did attend them. You don't let me speak at those during public comments.
What questions do you have? Now's your opportunity.
He also didn't provide a printout.
What is...
I don't even have the budget in front of me. So how can I even have the presentation? Because he didn't even print it or give it to us. You made a statement that it was only K through 8 supplies, yet when I just did the math, it looks like you're counting supplies for 1,300 students, not the K through 8 amount. So if you're budgeting for 1,300 students, then why aren't the high school being included in those supplies?
I don't fully understand your question. So I did supplies, based upon all students at the high school have supplies purchased for them, whether they're textbooks, or whether they are library books, or whether they are other types of supplies. That doesn't mean that it's necessarily their own personal supply, as well as a technological device.
So the technology devices are often funded through grant services, so that can't really be included in this being supplied, because that's two different things. So...
No, that's incorrect. They're not all funded by Milte. One grade level at the middle school is funded by Milte. Generally speaking, you are spending $492,000 right now on supplies. If you divide that by 1,300 and whatever students, 53, 73, whatever the number was, it comes out to about $358. The students get a laptop in that, as well as K-8...
You just said $492 divided by 1,300. You're saying it's 345? That's not the number I got.
What did you get?
If that's the number you're using, am I not getting 616?
I don't know what number you're getting. I know that, roughly speaking, you're spending about $300 or $400 a student. If my number's off, divide it. You can divide 492...
Well, if I was trying to understand, if the number that I'm getting only makes sense if it's all the students, otherwise, you're saying it's 1,300. We're only giving it about 800 students. That's K through 8.
But this is supplies for all the students. It's K-12 supplies.
But you're saying it's only K through 8 that you're supplying supplies to?
No.
You're speaking individual supplies, correct?
Yeah. That's what we were trying to fund two years last year.
So we're funding individual supplies, K through 8.
Correct.
And then Mr. Walsh in the high school puts general supplies for... Not for all of their individual needs, but for the classroom needs.
Correct.
Okay.
Or the teacher need. Right, absolutely.
So parents are still in the high school having to purchase supplies, and we ran into that issue last year, because they... Miscommunication.
Yeah, I did not communicate that. So I'm trying to be very clear that the supplies that students would get in this current budget cycle, that would be like, I'm assuming, it's a packet. Melissa, you don't have to come down, but pencils, paper, trapeabers...
Right, I understand the basics of that, but when we're saying that, and yet we're funding it for all, including the high school, then we should just give them the supplies too, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so I... Okay, so I can certainly talk to Mr. Walsh and look at what that increase would be and present that.
It's not an increase. You're already budgeting for it.
No, no. The budget in there is K through 12, from what I understand, general supplies. I mean, maybe it's books that are required, et cetera. Individual supplies, trapper keepers, pencils, whatever, K through eight.
Yes, I understand.
And then nine through 12, they're responsible for those individual supplies.
But we're budgeting for it.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
Haley, is there a recommendation then to add money for individual supplies, nine through 12?
Well, first of all, it's, the way I see it, we're allotting for it, but yes.
But you're not seeing it accurately. So my question to you is, would you, are you recommending individual supplies, nine through 12?
I'm saying it's not fair to leave the high school out. Of course not.
It's yes or no.
I answered you. The answer was yes.
Yes.
But did you have something you want to add?
Want to look at that?
As someone that goes to Herman High School, I think it's very difficult to buy supplies for the high school students since our classes are so different. I'm already taking college-level courses. So it's not really fair to buy materials for me that would be the same as freshmen because our courses are just so completely different and the materials we need differ per student. Like, I prefer to have a binder for each course, but I know some students will use one binder for four classes and it works for them.
That's, that's fair too. And that's the feedback that we need too, because I, I know that a lot of the teachers were picking out what they needed, but then it's not what students wanted anyway and they had to go buy it. So I thought, those are the feedbacks that I don't keep talking about, that we need to get from parents and staff.
But Mrs. Keizer, we had that feedback. Mr. Walsh and I talked and he said it's not advantageous to buy supplies, nine through 12. It needs to be a K-8 initiative if it is initiative. So that was already planned for. The building principals do a great job at providing that feedback because that funnels up through the budget process via their teachers and what they're hearing from their
You were saying that, I noticed year over year, it's around 80,000 or so for the budget for the bus. I mean, buses last. Why are we buying a bus every year? Like, at some point, we, we don't need a new bus every year unless, I don't understand.
We do need a new bus every year. We need to rotate one out of the fleet and one in the fleet. We currently have seven bus runs. We have two that are on their last leg from a mileage standpoint. And in main roads, we, when we're running day after day, two runs, one for a K-8 level, sorry, one for the K-4 level, one for the 512 level. Plus, you have multiple buses that are going out on athletic trips. And so it is very proactive to continue to put one new bus in your fleet on an annual basis.
So we just replace those two buses? Is my understanding correct that we're already on their last leg? So that scenario, we've solved.
Right, but then another bus gets a year older, right? So it, think of it like we have many buses in our fleet that are five-plus years older and we have several that are brand new. And every year, those just move down the line and you rotate a new one in and you rotate your oldest bus out.
How many students ride the bus?
I have no idea.
I mean, what if there's like, are every, is every bus full?
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of people bring their kids now since COVID, they've gotten that habit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
It's a pretty question.
It's also just bus lifecycle management, right? I mean, you got 12 buses, you replace one every year, means that you're going to keep the bus between 10 and 12 years.
Yeah. The challenging thing is the rust that they encumber because of the things being sprayed on the road and they're out in inclement weather and it's very hard to keep them from not getting eaten, eaten through from rust, especially when they reach that nine or 10-year-old age level.
What grade is the middle school teacher being added for?
Electives.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
We had gone round and round about making sure that the science project was in the budget. It was my understanding that it was going to be in this coming budget, so that it would be done next summer.
So if it was done next summer, that would fall into the next budget cycle. It would be done over July and August. So it would have to be in the '26 budget. We cannot get it done in this, this summer.
The page that you had towards the end that talked about future positions being added and you mentioned there weren't any, is that right?
That's correct.
The only thing that I really just want us to be really thinking about is a second SRO officer. As safety of our students is such a priority. And we've seen the positive effects that Deputy Boyd has had here. I just would like to be proactive and try to be thinking about that.
I didn't see anything in that budget for safety improvements. We haven't had any discussions about that. We haven't had.
The doors at the middle school, the cameras and the paging system.
True, that is true. But we were going to discuss.
The antivirus solution for IT.
You don't have an extra copy of that presentation. I find that to be, I mean, part of the job is that we're well-prepared and informed and have these documents.
It's online.
Yeah, I saw it online, but I just, I.
What other items did you have?
I don't have it to look at, so it's hard to reference things.
Oh, I thought, sorry, I thought you were taking notes, Darn.
Well, I was taking notes, but.
I printed mine.
Jesse, did you want to add something?
I'll echo a lot of what I said in the last finance committee meeting, like it to you, but I want to thank you and Jamie for pulling this all together. I know you guys are still buttoning up a few things and finalizing the package, but I know a lot of effort has gone in, not just you and Jamie, but your building administrators and all the folks out there that make this thing happen. Just getting to the numbers, again echoing what I said before, I think we're at 4.2% for total increase in this last pass. I'd like, just guidance individually, right? I'd like to see us around the 3.3%, 3.4%. Our inflation is 3.1%. I'd like us to get around that area if we can. And I know that means tightening things up a little bit better, not cuts, but making sure we're taking that 7%, 5% down to the 2% in excess. One other question I had, just maybe more on process for the $250,000 for the project, the high school project. If that were to go to the town, and Micah, you don't have to answer this now, but maybe connect with Josh, if that were to go to the town, could we put a question out there to say up to $250,000? And it would allow us some flexibility if we come in, you know, in excess of 150,000? If we don't have 250,000 to put forward, you know, could we put 150,000? And I think you mentioned a cap, right? But just maybe some flexibility to the town to allow us to put up to a certain amount. Again, not sure if it's possible, but it's maybe something to look into. That's all I had. Thank you.
And another question about the bus, somewhere in here. That money, we have money set aside already, right, for the reserve with the town for the bus? So are you taking money out and then putting it back? Like, what, how? We, we already have money set aside for that on the town, on the reserve account. Correct? 87,000.
Yeah, there is money in the reserve account. We are budgeting for that out of the fund balance account.
So what's, what is our goal with the reserve that has the money in there set aside already? For this bus reserve? We're just going to just?
We have it there in case we need to buy another one, but right now, we feel like it makes the most sense to budget for that out of fund balance and not at a reserve account, because we need to continue to reduce that fund balance account.
I just add, it does give us a flexibility to use that fund balance account, but it also gives us some padding in the event we have something unexpected for a bus to happen, right? Maybe it's a failed motor or something where we need to buy two buses.
One catches on fire.
Yep. So it's an emergency fund.
Yeah, no, that happened last year.
So there's a new scholarship at Herman High School that's the Herman Area Scholarship, and I was wondering where the funds for that scholarship come from?
That is an excellent Mrs. Youngblood question. That'd be you, Jamie. That's, but that's, that's from the money that the students raise, not what, or sorry, what the students, what's raised at Gates and things of that nature, not what's expended and brought in from tuition and other sources of revenue.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Am I reading this correct? Are we waiving the adminis, the fee for our students to be able to get into sporting events again?
Yes, we are anticipating that, yes.
Good.
I see you have a food service reserve still with the town of 30,000. What's the plan for that if it's being funded through the state?
Right now, I don't have a plan for the food reserve account.
And I thought we, at least twice, we've gone over the 100,000 in there for the enrollment stabilization reserve? What was it?
Yeah, in the revenues, we are anticipating, we have, we talked about this in finance committee. There's a little bit of a split opinion. We are budgeting $60,000 out of that account for, out of district placement for special education. We do need to get that name changed so that, that's something that has been, we've discussed that many, many times here at the committee level. But we are budgeting $60,000 from that account if needed.
And you have 200, nearly 30,000 in fuel reserves? You just keep that there as a cushion for, in addition to your budget for inflation? Okay.
Yeah, especially for heating oil and obviously for fuel bus costs as diesel.
Just for clarification, for the topic of conversation, we're using a $19.8 million budget. Of the 19.8, 406,000 is going to projects.
Correct.
Which means our operational budget, as I would call it, or your day-to-day budget, is actually a $19.4 million budget.
Correct.
Plus or minus however you recalibrate over the next couple of weeks.
I mean, we're looking at things that we're funding for IT and cabling and things that, like I mentioned, those are projects that we funded and completed supposedly already. I'm just cautious, one, because of a lack of communication and transparency about where you're going and what you're doing and what the plan is. So we're just throwing a large amount of money at it without knowing some of that stuff has already been done.
I don't necessarily understand what you mean by a lack of transparency in communication. I know that we have a phenomenal new IT director who is working on a 12-month plan and is planning several cabling projects to be completed. And we are excited to see what this network is going to look like in a year when he gets done with it.
Any other discussion?
I know you're just going to drive it right through, Stephanie, but sometimes it takes time to come up with questions.
That's not necessary. I asked, are there any other discussions?
First off, if you had told us that we were going to be having a first reading and not a budget presentation, then I understood. And I had the budget, I would have been better prepared.
I thought we had talked about it several times.
Mrs. Keizer, is that the budget that you're looking through?
Yep, I got my hands on a copy of it. Yes, I did.
You were at finance committee where we handed those out.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
As presented.
Yep.
We're going to be working on it.
Yep, thank you.
Well, how can you work on it if this is a first reading?
All those opposed?
That's a question, excuse me, point of order. I need clarification. What is your? How can you say, as proposed, we're going to work on it and change it? It's a first reading.
Because as presented, it was that we're continuing to go through the individual cost centers and as Mr. Grant stated, we're recalibrating.
And so this is discussion?
We just need to clarify the vote. We've already been through discussion. We took a vote.
That's, that's, thank you, yeah.
Just clarification on what the initial vote was.
Yep, the initial vote is a presentation to approve the first reading of the FY '25 budget.
As presented.
As presented. I made a motion. Do I have a second? No, we already did all that. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we're going to be adding, do you want to talk about the additional meeting to be added?
Yes, just give me one second. Okay, we are looking to, I know it's a little bit, it's not, doesn't follow our normal pattern, March, we were looking at either two to three weeks. That gives us enough time to make those necessary changes to those projections on the cost centers and make sure that we really nail down our expenditures. So my plan, I would like to bring the budget back for a second and final reading on March 27th. And then on March 28th, I will be presenting the budget to the town council. So that would be March 27th. I'd like to do an additional school meeting for budget, second reading for, for budget.
I have a separate question. So when you're making these final adjustments and there is no other subcommittees planned, when are you doing that work with a committee?
I work on the budget every day. And then I present the budget to the school committee for approval.
He just had made a mention of working on it, so I just, I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, I will have to, like I said in my presentation, I am hopeful that the budget will be reduced much farther than the 19.861. I'm hoping it's in the 19.7 range. So Jamie and I have a lot of work to do in the next three weeks to bring forward cost centers that are accurate, that we can post confidently. So I will be doing that work from now until, I mean, frankly, it'll be before March 27th. It'll be several days before when we post the cost centers and we post the new, the new numbers, so.
I make a motion to approve the addition of the school, additional school committee meeting for March 27th of this year. Do I have a second?
A second. And just to clarify.
Any discussion, yeah.
6:30, same time as usual.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. March 27th at 6:30.
Okay.
For further clarification, this is a special school committee meeting for approval of the second reading. So there'll be no other agenda items. This is for the budget.
Well, there potentially could be other agenda items, right? I would never rule out needing, right, another agenda item. But it is designed so that we can have another budget meeting that fits with working with Mr. Berry at the town to get the budget to the town council.
Okay.
There won't be any. There won't be any administrative reports, et cetera?
Yeah, okay.
To clarify.
So this is an additional meeting, meaning that there will still be a meeting beginning of April?
April 1st.
April 1st?
Yes.
Are you sure?
I think so.
Is this a meeting that I should attend as well, or since it's kind of?
If you wish, it's optional.
It's totally up to you.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I do have a question, though. Just considering the statement that was just made, he changed the last meeting, so it was within the.
I need to finish the vote, please. All those opposed?
Oh, I thought we just did. I missed, right?
Okay, motion carries.
Yeah.
Next up.
I was asking a question. Could you finish that?
What's the question?
So he changed the meeting date from the Tuesday that was to Thursday, so that wasn't ample amount of time to even have that budget workshop, whatever you're trying to call it now. So again, if you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
It makes this whole thing boring.
Next up, administrative reports. I know, thank you to the administrators, we didn't need to have anything added in there because we had just recently met, so thank you for that. The finance report, we've gone over. Committee reports. Do we have anything for facilities or the safety committee?
Or technology? It'd be nice to have him present.
I'm going in order. Did we have facilities?
We have it, Matt.
Okay.
Since budget.
Thank you. Finance committee, we've gone over. Policy committee. Micah, did you have any that you were going to bring toward?
I am looking at it, at the date like we normally do, right before, the week before for policy subcommittee, looking at a couple of scholarship policies and also looking at how we interact with our boosters, so looking at a couple booster policies. I will have a better, we're in negotiations, full swing right now, and obviously budgets, so I will have a date sent out to the policy, for policy by the end of the week. So looking at to do that normal schedule like the Tuesday before for policy.
Okay. Technology, do we have an update? And I want to thank Alex for putting in his report this time, too. That's great to have that separated, so thank you.
I was hoping he would present since he's here and.
Did we have any technology committee updates?
Go ahead, David. You're on.
No, you, yeah, you were asked to do it by the superintendent and myself. Did you have something you wanted to add to the tech committee?
I thought Alex did a good job presenting. He was a good communicator and he put the effort in to answer our questions, so I really appreciated that. And otherwise, it's as written. Perfect. Anything else to add there?
Alex did a great job of giving an overview of the tech plan to comply with our, our goal to have a plan by the 1st of March. And he completes the plan within 12 months rather than the projected 18, so it's on track.
Perfect. Do we have a spruce update?
Yeah, so the spruce team met on February 15th for orientation and just background and history, and spruce will meet again on March 28th to review their budget, which I believe is going to be presented to area superintendents that morning first.
Perfect. We'll go around for possible future agenda items, Chris?
We didn't go over the superintendent report.
I'm okay for future agenda items.
Okay.
Well said, thank you.
Okay.
I would like for future agenda item to have the results of Mr. Grant's survey that he sent out to the staff and their feedback, so we could have that for our review. Should we put the retirement party or that discussion?
I've already asked the finance subcommittee to look at that.
And still asking for a subcommittee policy.
Perfect. Anything else? Brian?
Yeah, I noticed back in November, and things got, got distracting, so, but it was in a principal's report that they actually looked at the ALICE process and they did some ALICE training, which is the alert, lock down, inform, confront, evacuate training. And I failed to ask questions and to get some follow-up on it. I forget what happened in November, but it was in my notes and I didn't get to it. If we could add, add that to April so that we could look into those things or see how that went. And I also saw that the comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines was a training in November. If those two things could kind of be consolidated, just, just so we can see where that school safety and that threat assessment was going. Several months ago, I asked us to do a threat assessment as a survey or to try to get an external third person to look at our facilities. So if that's something we can maybe incorporate into end-of-year funding, if it, if there's even a provider out there that could give that sort of survey, I just, I don't want to have that threat assessment and those, those concerns leave our sight, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yep.
When you use the term threat assessment, are you looking at the threat assessment from a facility standpoint?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eva, did you have anything?
Nope, I still got one.
Oh, sorry, Brian.
I still got one. So I, I would like us to nail down a date for a subcommittee for budget tonight, if we can, for our next, so we have a scheduled next subcommittee for it. A date I just wrote down was 12 March, which is, I think, next week, but somewhere in that timeframe, so we have some time to, to look at the information that we've got and then as a group to include not only just the, the school subcommittee, but also the town, have the town council representatives with us, so we can look at it at 12 March as a scheduled meeting and then maybe a follow-on if needed.
So you're saying full committee?
No, I'm saying finance subcommittee with the town council member representation.
In the libraries?
Yep. Key club induction might be a.
Yeah.
In that timeframe, somewhere around 11 to 13 March. But I'm just looking at, give you enough, give us all enough time after tonight's presentation and an opportunity to look further into the data so that we can go over as a subcommittee sooner.
Mr. Venziano, Mr. Keith, how would March 14th work? That's a Thursday.
Thursday. Works fine for me.
Still in the same week. Works better for me.
Is that, is that? Is that going to give you and Jamie enough time to get everything?
We'll bring what we have, yeah, we'll bring what we have done and if we have to meet one more time, the 20th, 21st, that's not a, you know, not a big deal. And I can extend obviously the invitation to Mrs. Hagerty, Mr. Snire and Mr. Berry.
And the, the time for that, the normal time of four, I think, or what's supposed to be, Jesse?
Four, yes, we've been, yeah, four. So the 14th at four.
The only thing that I had to add is I, I don't remember the last time we talked about test scores and just how we're ranking on that, so just making sure that those are included in the April administrative reports.
Yeah, we actually, you'll probably have a testing report and then the scores would, I'll have to check on the timetable for spring testing, because we're, we're right in that season right now.
Oh, they're waving their hands, they know.
Testing, so testing, the testing window opens with other people and so we will probably not.
Okay. Perfect.
But we would certainly plan on bringing results forward when, with our new curriculum coordinator, when we get our test results.
Perfect. I make a motion to approve the warrants as presented, the five that are listed. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yep. Yes. I had mentioned that the cell phone bill was in a former employee's name that no longer works here, that was supposed to be resolved, like, I think it was October, November, when I have documentation of that. I see it's still coming through in that former employee's name. It's a concern. And I see we're paying Bangor IT for things, which I thought we weren't doing that anymore, so I'm unclear why we're still doing that, so. In good conscience, I'm not sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to adjourn at 8:05 PM.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.